Again, good morning, everyone. At this time, I'll ask our clerk to do the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor Gamble sends his regrets. Counselor Burley.
Present.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Deputy Warden McQueen.
Present.
Counselor Desai.
Present.
Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Fleet, welcome. Counselor Columbus.
Present.
Counselor Kivany.
Present.
Counselor Body.
Present.
Counselor O'Leary.
Present.
Counselor Woodbury.
Here.
Counselor Millen.
Present.
Counselor Soever.
Present.
Counselor Bordenial.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And at this time, we'll do our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history and the spirituality and culture of the Anishinaabe. I knew I was going to throw that one. Anishinaabe, Nami, the six nations of the Grand River, the Haudenosaunee, the Wanda, Waindott, and Waindott peoples of those traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Métis and the Inuit, whose ancestors share this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Looking at our approved agenda, is there any declaration of interest to the items on today? If one does arise, you can declare at that time. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the adoption of the 28th of April's county council meetings? Counselor Millen and Counselor Hutchinson, any errors or omissions in those minutes?
Mr. Warden.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Soever.
Yes, on page seven of the Committee of the Whole Minutes, under other business, it states a point of order was called, was Counselor Borginion and Counselor Desai. So I'm not sure what that means. And it says, Warden Hicks ruled on each. Now, I have looked at the video and it was a point of order raised by Counselor Borginion. And but it was not really clear. So I understand that the clerk's difficulty in preparing these minutes because the the warden did not rule whether Counselor Desai was or was not in order in that instance, and just merely said, I'll give you the opportunity to wrap it up. And then Counselor Borginion raised another point of order at 14 minutes in. And again, Counselor Desai was told to wrap it up. But there was no real ruling on so on whether, you know, this I was out of order or not. So I understand the clerk's difficulty here, but the minutes do reflect that he ruled. And there was another point of order raised by Counselor Desai, which the warden did rule was not a point of order. So I don't know, I just find the minutes don't really reflect what really happened there. And so therefore, I just have difficulty approving them. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Sorry for Deputy Warden. Yes, okay. And thank you for that, Counselor Soever. I did I did do the videos myself and you're correct, there are two points of order from Borganar and also one for Counselor Desai. Madam Clerk, do you have comments to the minutes that were written?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. While the warden did not specifically say, use the term rule, he allowed Counselor Desai to continue, and so he didn't rule him out of order. So in my opinion, that is a ruling on the point of order.
Okay, thank you. And I do know, I watched it also on the point of where Counselor Desai, that I think he did say before he allowed you to speak, Counselor Soever, he did allow the point to be made by Counselor Desai as well. Comments back to from you, Counselor Soever?
Yes, and so the minutes don't really reflect what was ruled. So you know, I just think they're incomplete.
Madam Clerk, do you have any other comments? Okay, what's county council feel toward the point that's been raised? Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Those of us that were here at the meeting, myself included, would agree that the warden at the time did rule by not specifically, as the clerk pointed out, not stopping the speakers. So I'm prepared to support these minutes as, excuse me, as proposed.
I gotta get used to this mic here. They haven't moved in second. Other comments from county counselors? Yes, process, if there are changes to the to the minutes, how does that process work if there is? Okay, so an amendment would have to be put on the floor and voted on compared to the minutes that are there. Okay, so Counselor Soever, any, there's been comments saying that they're in order. What's your comments back?
Okay, well, looking at the the video, I would say that then the warden, if the clerk's taking the position, the warden did rule, that the warden did rule that Counselor Desai was not out of order in response to both of Counselor Borginion's points of order, but then in the case of Counselor Desai's point of order, I believe the warden did say that is not a point of order. So I think the minute should reflect that, those statements, because that is the ruling that the warden made, and it should be reflected in the minutes. So I would move that the minutes be amended to reflect the warden's decision in each case.
Sure. So there will have to be some wording. Is there a seconder for that amendment of those minutes? Is there a seconder, Counselor Borganor? Hope I'm saying that right. If I'm not, I apologize. Okay, so I think we need to make sure we craft the word wording correctly for the amendment. So Tara is maybe drawing points down. Counselor Soever, you may want to just summarize your points that you're wishing to change in that point of or that amendment, just to reiterate.
I would say, I would say that two points of order were raised by Counselor Borginion, which the warden ruled were two times. Yeah, I guess two times Counselor Borginion raised a point of order to say that Counselor Desai was out of order, that the warden ruled that Counselor Desai could continue. Counselor Desai raised the point of order, which the warden ruled was not a point of order. I mean, I think that's what happened. I'm sure the clerk can wordsmith it a little bit better, but I'm
trying to work, generally saying when you're the chair of a meeting, if there's a point of order, you stop the meeting and you say, what's your point of order? Generally, that's what you do. So Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. The motion for an amendment is that the county, sorry, the Committee of the Whole Minutes dated April 28, 2022, be amended to reflect the ruling of the warden related to the points of order raised by Counselors Bordenial and Desai.
That works fine.
Okay, so that amendment is on the on the floor, amendment to the minutes that have been printed, discussion on those amendments, that amendment, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I love to think I do the things first at everything. So but I'm sure I was not the first one to raise a point of order, nor was I the first that a point of order was raised against. My question to you, Warden, or Action Warden, to the clerk, is in the past has practiced being to note in the minutes, the precise ruling of the chairs ruling on on points of order.
Through you, Deputy Warden, to Counselor Desai, no. We, if it's out of order, we will note the discussion stopped because the warden ruled out of order, but if it's not, it was ruled on the point of order.
Other comments, discussion on the amendment to the minutes. That's been moved in second. All in favor of the amendment to the minutes?
Mr. Warden, I'd like a recorded vote, please.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we're voting on the amendment. Counselor Mackey. Sorry, I'll relay the vote.
No.
Counselor Mackey is opposed. Counselor Burley.
Opposed.
Counselor Burley is opposed. Counselor Carlton.
Opposed.
Counselor Carlton is opposed. Deputy Warden McQueen.
Opposed.
Deputy Warden is opposed. Counselor Desai.
Opposed.
Counselor Desai is opposed. Counselor Patterson.
Opposed.
Counselor Patterson is opposed. Counselor Fleet. Counselor Fleet is opposed. Counselor Columbus.
Opposed.
Counselor Columbus is opposed. Counselor Kivany. Counselor Kivany is opposed. Counselor Body.
Opposed.
Counselor Body is opposed. Counselor O'Leary.
Opposed.
Counselor O'Leary is opposed. Counselor Woodbury.
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury is opposed. Counselor Millen.
Nay.
Counselor Millen is opposed. Counselor Soever.
In favor.
Counselor Soever is in favor. Counselor Bordenial.
In favor.
Counselor Bordenial is in favor. Counselor Robinson.
Opposed.
Counselor Robinson is opposed. Counselor Hutchinson.
Opposed.
Counselor Hutchinson is opposed. The amendment is lost 1374.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the amendment is read out, has been defeated. Then we're going back to our original motion with regards to the minutes. Is there any other discussion on those minutes? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the minutes? That is carried.
Mr. Warden, I'd like a recorded vote on that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, the request for a recorded vote.
Sorry, we are voting on the Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated April 28. Counselor Mackey.
In favor.
Counselor Burley.
Favor.
Counselor Carlton.
In favor.
Deputy Warden McQueen.
In favor.
I'm sorry, I should be. Counselor Mackey, Burley, and Carlton voted in favor. Deputy Warden McQueen in favor. Counselor Desai.
In favor.
Counselor Desai is in favor. Counselor Patterson.
In favor.
Counselor Patterson is in favor. Counselor Fleet. Counselor Fleet is in favor. Counselor Columbus.
In favor.
Counselor Columbus is in favor. Counselor Kivany.
In favor.
Counselor Kivany is in favor. Counselor Body. Counselor Body is in favor. Counselor O'Leary. Counselor O'Leary is in favor. Counselor Woodbury. Counselor Woodbury is in favor. Counselor Millen.
Yay.
Counselor Millen is in favor. Counselor Soever.
Opposed.
Counselor Soever is opposed. Counselor Bordenial.
Opposed.
Counselor Bordenial is opposed. Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Robinson is in favor. Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson is in favor. The minutes passed 7413.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Going on into our closed session minutes of April 28. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Woodbury, second by Counselor Patterson. We can't, because we're going to have a discussion, we have to go in closed session there, but are there any errors or omissions with those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, no, it's carried. So that's carried. Okay, moving on into reports, Board of Health minutes, can I have that put on the floor, please? Counselor Burley, Counselor Mackey. Okay, Doctor Said is going to speak to those minutes, and then I'll look at Counselor Patterson afterwards. So good morning.
Good morning, through you, Mr. Warden. I I would like to provide some updates about the Board of Health meeting on the on May 25th, on March 25th. There are two important points that have been raised, the one related to opioid update on the opioid crisis. I presented a presentation on the local data and epidemiological data and how to, and the importance of collaboration on the epidemiological data initiatives in in terms of mortality data related to opioid and opioid-related harms, in addition to harmonization of the local data of opioid overdose and other related harms. And this is the the work that the Grey Bruce Health Unit is working on it right now, together with with the partners in the community. In addition to that, we have more activity at the provincial levels through the co-working group on opioid crisis, as we identified nine priorities for the opioid crisis and and its related harms, and identified the local public health role in the in the prevention and addressing the opioid crisis. So that's the first point. The second point is related to the plan from of the Health Unit for catching up on vaccination lag, and this was related to the the vaccine in, other than COVID vaccine, it is a plan for the the other vaccine preventable disease. A staff from the Health Unit, the manager of vaccine preventable diseases, provided simplified timeline related to the school year, and we are in in the year, the current 2022 school year, by the end of this year, grade seven and eight, we receive their first dose of of vaccines. And next year, there is complete series for for the 2008 and 2009 cohort and begin 2010 cohort and continue the ISPA assessment and administration for the next school year, 2022 to 2023. And for this plan, we have from 2023, 2024 school year, we will return to the regular immunization schedule with backlog cleared. So that's the two items I I wanted to update the council.
Thank you for that. And are there any questions to the doctor on those points that was raised? Maybe just stay online, and I'll go to Counselor Patterson, who is the chair, and if she has some things to add.
Thank you, Deputy Warden McQueen. I don't have any governance items to report on, but there is one item that I'd like to share. During this board meeting, March 25, we started a brief learning sessions that will take place at the beginning of each meeting. So there is a couple of items I want to share on that. So the Health Unit is led, as we know, by the Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Ian Era, and assisted by Dr. Reece Zead, who we just heard from. She is a physician consultant who leads the Foundation Standards and Operations. Pre-pandemic, about 110 people worked at the Health Unit. During the pandemic, the number has increased and fluctuated to around 160, including both unionized and non-unionized employees, permanent, contract, temporary employees, and students in different positions. So the following information is significant to the Health Unit, and I feel it is also important to all of us here to know what is covered in Gray and Bruce Counties. So the Grey Bruce Health Unit covers an area of 8,603 square kilometers and a population of 174,300. Grey Bruce has a higher-than-average older adult demographic. In Grey Bruce, there are 56 public elementary and secondary schools, 11 private schools, 19 long-term care homes, 23 retirement homes, 11 hospitals, 41 shelters, two First Nations communities, nine distinct Anabaptist communities, the largest operating nuclear power facility in the world, a Canadian Forces base, and a significant seasonal population. And when you hear those numbers, it puts it into perspective when we have to, when we work to provide services and programs to all of Gray and Bruce Counties. I just thought people would be interested in that because there's some good data in that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Counsel Patterson. I presume that'll be on your website, all that information, because that's a good, that's a good bunch of information there to know.
That's where the information came. I just recapped it.
Well, that's great to hear. Any questions to Counsel Patterson on on that? If not, I got Counselor Soever on the screen. Go ahead, Counselor Soever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. So this is a question for doctors I had. I noticed on the provincial data that there were five new deaths reported in Grey Bruce from COVID since the beginning of May. Are those new deaths, or are those just adjustments from previous deaths?
Go ahead, Doctor Said.
That's a great question. This is really, again, not new death. It is amendment or working on the previous one. So there is always in the mortality data, some amendment, and it goes to 2004 now. There is a lag in since 2020, June 2020. So they are new, not new deaths, but just amendment for the the cause of death.
Thank you for that, Counselors or Counselors Soever, do you have a follow-up?
I have another question, Mr. So with regard to vaccinations, looking at the provincial dashboard, you know, a few months ago, you were 12 times more likely to end up in ICU than if you had only two doses, according to the dashboard data. More recently, this number has dropped to about four times more likely only if you were unvaccinated relative to having two doses. Are we seeing the effect of two doses, like, waning, and should, I just like the commentary on people, should they be, are we reflecting the fact that some people haven't had their third doses or fourth doses, and their immunity is waning? Are we seeing that in the data? Because, you know, before it was obvious, you look at it, you go, okay, if you're unvaccinated, you're 12 times more likely to end up in ICU. Now that's dropped to four times. Well, that's quite a difference. So what do you attribute that to?
So so the 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 difference here is is depending on the severity of of the disease. So the disease itself is becoming less less severe. That's because of the vaccine effect and also the natural immunity. So there are two factors, like more factors here come in the environment. So the Asian, the host, and the environment. So more people, more people get vaccinated. So the vaccine, the vaccination pool is higher right now. Some people got infections, so there is a natural immunity from post-infection. So that's changing the picture of of the disease. But still, the being up to date for the vaccine is very important, especially with the type of hospitalization that we are seeing that is related to lung infections specifically.
Thank you.
Okay, that's Counselor Patterson. Do you have anything to add, or anybody else from the Health Unit having to add to that? Okay, thanks for those questions. Any other questions to those sets of minutes? Again, thank you, Doctor Said, for for speaking to those, seeing there's other questions, all in favor of the of those minutes. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. We have two bylaws on on. I don't think any of them wish to be split out. If not, can I have a mover and a seconder of those? Counselor, sorry, Counselor Patterson, or Robinson, I gotta get my name, and Counselor O'Leary. And I'll get somebody on the screen next time. Sorry about that. Any discussion on those on those two bylaws? I know there's a real important one on there, as we we know, and the other one's not, it is important to taxes, but you know. But we'll highlight that one, right? So any any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor of those two bylaws? Okay, that's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, the best part of the day is good news and celebrations. Who would like to start off with all the great news? I'm going to start with Counselor Millen and then Counselor Robinson. And I'll get somebody on the screen here if somebody's there, sorry. Oh, sir.
There we go, no problem. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Warden. I just want to give a shout out to the Markdale Rotary Club. The they had Johnny Harris from many, if you don't recognize that name, he was a star on the series. What the heck was it? Murdock Mysteries, there it is. Yeah, I had it just a minute ago, and it just disappeared all of a sudden. So anyway, he put on a show, and they, it was a great show. They even invited some injured olders from an adjoining municipality to to attend, and it was a great show, lots of fun, and I just thought that was a really good event. And kudos to the local Rotary Club in Markdale.
Thanks for that, Counselor Millen, and they did invite people other outside that had a really good laugh. And we won't say any names here, they are, right? But that that carries the show, it's heavy, and it was fun. I was there myself, and it was, it was a great time. And it's, you know, it's nice to have a good laugh, because we needed a time to have a good laugh, so. Oh, no. Right, no, it was, we were sitting in the front row, that's why. So yeah, that was, that was, there was a it was filmed in at the Markdale Rec or the Markdale Arena. It's supposed to air sometime in in the new year. So keep your eyes open on that. It's a show called Still Standing, and I think this is the eighth season, episode three, I think, if I did my math on that one, right? So stay tuned, it was a lot of fun. And basically, they interview a number of people out in the community, and then it comes to the evening, and then they sort of pick fun at the it's hard, you can imagine trying to pick fun on points that you're just new to, right? So anyway, and there was two other comedians that also made us laugh that night as well. So great, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Counsel Robinson. Sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Warden McQueen, and good morning to to one and all. The Newstadt and District Lines Club Steak Crab and Lobster Fest is back, and this delicious event will be held on Saturday, May 28, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the the Newstadt Hall. So we're very anxious to have this event again. All is welcome. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for that. Other news and celebrations? Come on, it's got to be smart there. Counselor Desai.
Well, I was trying to bring up the Ram Rodeo, but I see, yeah, sure. So Grey Highlands is putting on the Ram Rodeo, May 27th and 28th, I believe, are the dates. 27, 28, 29. It's gonna be an exciting time. There will be people with strong laughter available on hat. And it's a great fundraiser. All proceeds from that will be going towards the new hospital in Markdale. And which, by the way, is the progress on which is coming along great. There's someone on Facebook puts up drone pictures of the progress. I ask you, check them out. And also, I'd also like to report that the construction of the subdivisions is coming along terrific in Markdale. I don't even set my alarm anymore, because at 7 o'clock sharp, I I hear the beep. And so I wake up to that, but I'm looking forward to having new people move into our community. I'm having, I'm looking forward to having neighbors in my backyard and and yeah, looking forward to our town growing. So thank you. I'm looking forward to having neighbors uh, in my backyard and um, and yeah, uh, looking forward to our town growing. So, thank you.
Thank you for councillor Desai and yeah, and at the last count, we're up to fifty three thousand dollars in sponsorship for the rodeo, so. Yes, great stuff. Other uh, good news or celebrations? I will say that uh, my my day started this morning at five o'clock, I have to do chores and and that and uh, I was talking to councillor Millen this morning. And I went to the barn and there was a cow, looked like it was gonna have a calf, so I like, oh, or other other barn new chores, came back, it's one foot. So I called my eighty-eight-year-old dad and my seventeen-year-old son and we did a little bit of a of a operation and we got a new calf. And uh, I was able to make it here on time because I kept worrying, how am I gonna get here on time delivering a cab? But anyway, it happened and it came together and uh. I wasn't sure how I was going to explain that lateness, but uh, anyway, it came together, so. That was my 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 news for today. Go ahead, councillor Swatter. Uh, you have some good news.
Yes, um, some very good news. Um, we received a three point four million dollar grant from the Federal Infrastructure Program. For um, substandard water main replacement. So that's a big help for our replacement of uh, some of our older water mains. And I'm also happy to report that the town did score a hundred percent on its uh, water system inspection reports by the province. So um, congratulations to our staff for an excellent job. Well done.
That's great news and thanks for sharing that. Was there any more on the screen? I had, I thought I saw another hand on there. Okay, any other news? I just want to say that um, a shout out to our warden who has decided to take the time to run for. Uh, provincial election along with all the other candidates. And you know what? It takes, uh, it's a lot of effort and a lot of dedication to do that. So I think those candidates that are out there, if you see them out there, you know. Thank them for putting your name for it because it's so important that those that do stand up and put their name for it to to run for election, whether it's local or provincial or federal. I think I thank you, it goes a long way. So if you see them out there, you know, give them a, give them that support anyway, so. All right, so if there's no other uh, good news and celebrations, I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Carlton and councillor Keveney. All in favor of that motion? That's carried unanimously. The screen here, so, okay.